We on? Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, November 7, 2018. Pleasure, allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you. And we've got an agenda. And seven. And I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
Sue. And any changes or... Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have minutes for October 17, 2018. I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 17, 2018, as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
And any discussion or corrections?
I do not see any.
Sue? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. You'll see a note here from Ernie Beckwith. Says, "Hi Emmett. My wife and I have gotten to know Lisa Conroy over the last few months since we have become regulars at Park and Rec Pickleball at the town offices gym." It's supposed to be a lot of fun. "She has been extremely supportive and responsive to all of us players. Pickleball is a great activity for seniors, keeping us physically active. We all love the sport and love Lisa. East Hattam is fortunate to have her as the Park and Rec Director. Regards, Ernie Beckwith." And I know Ernie. He's a great guy. And one of these days, I'm going to get to play that myself, see what it's all about. And the first selectman's report. Not a whole lot here. Couple of things I wanted to comment upon. Eric, you've been asking about the Ackley Road. And I've talked to Beth about it. I've driven it. And I said, "Well, can we get moving on that and can Consumer's Reports give us a hand with it?" She said, "We'll talk to the lawyer." I gave him a call, and he's preparing a hold harmless so that we can give permission to do it. He also indicated that we're going to have to get union permission because we're taking work away from union members. And so, we're going to have to have their clearance before we can do it. Beth went on to indicate that right now, there's one lane of questionable integrity open. Great deal of water out there. She feels that it's really not in any shape to be worked on yet. If two cars attempted to pass, one of them would certainly end up stuck. So, we are staying on top of that. And we're having water, seems like every third day right now. And I don't know how soon it's going to dry out. She was also curious about what the source of stone for that, for the material to work on it, might be. Whether she needs to get it together or if Consumer's Report was going to provide it. So, that's where we stand on that one. There's a question about reaching out to the state's Public Works Department. Beth has been in meetings with them. They are working right now, trying to come together with a priority list and a plan. This is damaged and dead trees we're speaking of. Their indication is they don't have the resources. EverSource doesn't, at this point, have any resources available. And we've pretty well exhausted our resources for working on them. And we had a meeting this afternoon at COG. Great deal of discussion about what the option might be, how they could help out, what they could do for us. Somebody was talking about acquiring some equipment so that we could use it on a loan lease basis from them. Get a bucket truck that the various towns could take out and actually use. That would mean training some staff for it. And so, we're looking at it, trying to figure out how to do it. They had the gentleman from the Forestry Department there. He indicated the state has a count, a rough count, of about 17,000 trees that they feel they're responsible for. It's a mammoth item. With all the rain we've had and the washouts, we've not been focusing as heavily as we might on that, but it is there as an issue. The question that Mr. Blaschek raised about the two bridges on Route 82, and I'm very aware of those. They continue to tell us that they're going to be drivable, that the lights will be down, there'll be two-way traffic this fall. They also indicate that it's going to be only the single layer of asphalt on it, so it'll be drivable. And my own opinion is that if you drive on that all winter with the snow and the salt and the sand and everything that goes on, you're going to have to rip it up and redo it completely next spring. So, we're probably going to see them tied up again. The cornerstone, according to everybody you talked to on that, is that EverSource wasn't timely enough in moving the wires and relocating poles so they could continue with work. I can only repeat what I hear. Sue, you were looking for a copy of the RFP. And the East Hattam Revitalization Committee and Jimmy met, actually, last night. They're working on a final version. And there's a lot of flux going back and forth. Apparently, the revitalization people feel it ought to be RFQ. And the opinion, my opinion included, is it should be more of an RFP. So, the exact design is still up in question. There is a rough draft available of that right now, but it isn't finished yet.
That's available for us to look at?
The rough draft is available, but it may or may not reflect what winds up being the final product. And Rob, you had, were frustrated about the foundation issue with the bridge down there at Bone Mill Road. I was down there tonight. It's been dug out. They've got the iron, at least on one side, in place for casting the required additional supports. And when I asked about that, they said, "Well, the bridge was in place, the road was in place, and no one anticipated there was going to be any issue with it. And when they finally exposed it, there was." Should they have looked farther and more carefully at the beginning? Perhaps. But we have what we have. They are working on it. They do indicate that they anticipate having the bridge in place this fall. I took a look at it today, and I hope they're right.
Well, with the exception of the rerod, which has been in place, the reinforcing wire, excuse me, reinforcing rod and et cetera, and they dug it out, it's basically the same as it was at our previous meeting. So, they're not moving very quickly on it.
I, and I have to get it, Sue, Tully is doing that, I believe.
Trade.
Oh, trademark. Trademark is doing that. Tully's the other bridge.
And so, then, and they don't even have it formed on the, you know, on the, on the opposite side from the above.
Correct.
So, in the northwest side, they haven't started any work on.
Yeah. I'm questioning what they told me, myself. I would agree with you. But I'm not an engineer. Okay. That's what I have. And we're opening it now for citizens' concerns. Do we have any... Yes?
I have. I was not at the last meeting. But I have here the information that you were looking for. I did not email it to you because I sent you two emails since the last two meetings. I have not responded to any of them. So, I thought I'd just do a packet tonight, and that way, there's no question on who received what.
Thank you.
The first picture you're looking at is from Google Maps, if I'm not mistaken, in 2011. And it shows that the road is perfectly straightened. Mr. Curtin stated that there was a curb in the road, and he had to take part of the property to correct the curb. You can see there is no curb. The second picture, also from Google Maps, of what is circled is a little green box, and there's no boundary tent. This was taken in 2011. And it shows the neighbor's fence. The next picture shows a boundary marker. And that picture was taken October 4 of this year. That's a boundary marker for the property that was placed sometime between 2011 and 2018. The next picture you're looking at was taken on October 9 of this year as well, and it's a survey marker that shows where the stone wall was. The picture after that, which was taken October 4 of this year, shows remnants of the stone wall. And as you remember, Mr. Curtin said that all the stones were removed and nothing was left. It also shows the curving and the road. If you go back to the picture that shows the boundary marker, if you go up to the property and look at it, the boundary marker lines up exactly with the pillars, which are set very far off the road. And the next page is the original FOI request, which was in April of 2018, not December of 2017. And the wall was built in 2017, not 2015.
The wall or the piers, you mean?
The piers.
So, who took all these pictures and where'd they come from? So, I know the Google Maps ones where they, because I've looked at this property myself.
I took the pictures from the road.
Okay. And so, how do, who took the one from?
I took all the pictures except for the Google Maps. And this is still on my phone, timed and based on it. And then, the last email you'll see is from correspondence that I have with Land Use. And it's directly from him, and it says, "Actually, it's 25 feet from the center unless there's a stone wall, fence, or wire. And yes, the stone wall is usually split 50/50. On O'Connell, we only used what was ours."
It's...
Okay.
So, my question is, again, how did this take place with no correspondence, no information, no, nobody looking at it? And where's the checks and balance? When I asked what the checks and balance was, originally, I was told the checks and balance is the two selectmen and the finance department. Well, it got by all of you guys.
I'm not sure what got by us. Explain it a little bit more.
$6,500 of taxpayer money was spent for pillars on our private property for a stone wall that didn't, that clearly didn't need to be removed. And if it did, it belonged to the town. In exchange, there's no paperwork, no deed transfer. The town received nothing in writing. So, what is to prevent this from happening again?
So, I don't understand, though, because, so, this road today, this fence, is right on the road now. That's how much land they took.
From that side. If you look at the pictures that I took from October of this year, you can see the curving and how much land is left in the stone wall.
That's not, the stone wall was in front of, is in front of those trees.
The stone wall...
The stone wall was at the, the stone wall's gone now.
No, but still part of it there. As of October 4, part of it was still there. And there were survey markers in it.
I drove by the property the other day, and I didn't see any stone wall. I don't know. Maybe there's a hump of stones or something. I don't know. But I didn't see any. I guess I won't get in conversation about it.
Let's not get into that.
Well, maybe with the leaves or something, but those were the pictures.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Perry.
You had mentioned that you had talked to the state about the, all the dead trees along the state roads.
Beth did, not myself.
They don't have the resources to deal with it. They take the liability now. I mean, we all, you know, we all know that they're going to come down.
The...
I mean, if they start hitting cars and stuff, I mean, at this point, you know, I guess whoever the devil's advocate, who's, you know, who's going to be liable when people start to hurt?
There is liability involved. At COG today, we discussed that at great length. And this was all of the various lower, you know, the towns in this area. And we all have the same problem. The state has the same problem. And it's an overwhelming problem. No question about it. I mean, all trees that grow will eventually die. They're going to come down.
Oh, yeah. We all grow, right? The 17,000...
We're going to see a lot more, a lot faster than we anticipated. When we can identify a tree that has any imminent issue, we take care of it right on the spot. And I'm not going to argue with you, Perry. You're right.
No, no, I realize that. I'm just like...
And the response...
So, they're walking away from it, or?
No. And there are towns that are doing that. They're just ignoring it. And it doesn't reduce the liability. The one thought that they did offer, and this is the State Forestry Department who was there, was that a priority list, a plan where you're really looking to address this issue and using as much resource as you have to do it and do it properly offers you some small protection from the liability. Not a lot. Now, I'll tell you what. If it falls and it lands on a car, it's going to be a big issue. We're going to do the best we can. And the state likewise.
I'm not worried about our, the towns. I'm more concerned about the state, state.
I think we're all familiar with the state's issues, the money problems they have. And they are very conscious of what they're up against and very concerned about it, trying to work up a plan to deal with it. And we're all doing that. EverSource is doing it. They've exhausted all the money they have. The state has exhausted what they've got. We've exhausted what we have. And we're going to have to look to our budgets as we come into next year and deal with it. You do have some small latitude with it. Oaks take a while to fall. Gases, I think, are going to be a bigger problem. They fall more quickly. We're conscious of that. And I think it's a major issue for everyone involved, and we're all looking for answers. We're probably as badly hit as anyone, although there are other towns that have whole forests. Canterbury is a whole forest area that's been wiped out. And that's out in the woods and not going to be as big a deal. Not for cars. Hikers, people on trails, that's another issue. This is as big as it gets. The Emerald Ash has completely invaded all of New England now. And apparently, going out west, heading into Pennsylvania, that area, they've already had the problem, and it's much worse than what we have today. One of the issues that's developing is just labor, just finding people to hire and train who are willing to go out there and do some of this work. Never mind about what it's costing or where you're going to find the money. Just find the people who are available to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
It's, it's being taken extremely seriously. I spent two hours this afternoon at a meeting discussing this.
And going back to your comment about village revitalization and your feelings that the document that we're putting together should be in RFP rather than RFQ.
I think...
First question for you. Did you see the document that Bill Garrett shared with the rest of us?
I haven't seen that one yet.
Well, it talks about RFQ versus RFP. And clearly, this project would fall under RFQ.
Okay. I will be looking at that.
I was thinking like you, but after reading that, I changed my mind.
Let's see what it says. Let's see what it says. I'll try to make it available for both of you.
When you say RFQ, you're talking about request for qualifications or request for quotes?
Qualifications, I believe.
Qualifications.
That's what we're speaking of. And as opposed to a proposal for the property.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anyone else? Todd?
Yes, I have a question. Do you have a camera installed? This was a audio system. I appreciate it very much. Is the contents of these meetings being broadcast on YouTube?
Not live.
Well, I wouldn't think live. No, that's pretty...
But it is. What does it take? About a week for it to go up on YouTube?
A week to two weeks.
A week to two weeks to go up on YouTube.
I've heard reports people can't find it on YouTube, including myself. Well, how can we find it on YouTube?
I...
Town has a YouTube channel. I'll just send you the link.
Thank you.
I don't do YouTube or Facebook, so I couldn't even begin to help you with that.
Okay. Well, it's okay. It's there, and Linda will put me up. I'll find it. You know, I've been to several meetings now, and I know this is probably a pleasant subject to talk about, but it needs to be taken care of and put to bed. This issue with the wall on O'Connell Road, did we, was there inappropriate action taken and inappropriate money is being spent, public monies? Yes or no? Do we know yet?
The decisions that's based on were done in the spring of 2016. And I can't find anything that says it was inappropriate. It may not have been as well documented as it should have been.
Is it going to be a report written on this so we don't get questions anymore?
At this juncture, I thought we were through with it. I don't know. I can't offer you that. I'll have to look at it, see what we've got.
I suggest it would be really nice if that's done, not hang out like this. It was a clean deal, should be easy to write up. If there's something wrong with it, to Rob's point in the last meeting, we should find the root cause and not let it happen again. This town has got serious financial issues in front of it, as you just explained, as one of them is the trees. You can't afford to waste money. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up. Is it, so you're saying that it's standard procedure for a department head to negotiate with their employee for the town to do work on their property?
For a department head.
With no correspondence about it?
A department head. Who's, who's the department head?
According to Mr. Curtin's statements, Beth Lund negotiated with the town employees who is the property owner about having the pillars built. And there's no correspondence, so it's appropriate for the department heads to negotiate with their employee?
I...
And you, the town doesn't get involved?
I don't think I would come to this, but I was not party to that.
But you were selectman at the time?
No, I was not.
Yes, you were.
Spring of 2016, I was not a selectman. I'd gone off the board as of November 2015. And then, when Mark left in the summer of 2016, I came back on.
And this came up in 2007, in 2017?
The payment was made, but the negotiation and the deal was done in '16. I was not party to that.
But you signed the payment?
The payment came far after the actual act. And I, I don't know why, and I really can't account for that.
So, when you guys get checks in front of you, you just sign them? That's what I'm asking. I'm asking where's the checks and balance?
No. We look at it, and we see who signed for it and what happened, and we...
But there's nothing on this. So, you had a, you had a check in front of you and an invoice?
We had invoices, and we had to sign off on it, and we signed it. We agreed that it was okay.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business. East Hattam Village Revitalization Committee, they met on October 24. We've already discussed that a bit. And discussion about RFP versus RFQ. And we're going to get copies of that and take a look at it. They did, we approved at the last meeting, a membership in the Main Street Center, Connecticut Main Street. And that check has been issued. They are now members and looking into what services are available, hopefully getting connections with some developers through them and finding out just what's available to us. So, that should be moving along right now.
We have the results back from the testing, environmental testing.
Yeah, we got the final results.
Yeah.
The final results we have?
Ron?
Hey, sir.
The final testing for, from Eagle. Have we seen the last results of that?
You still have a draft report to have.
I'm sorry?
You still have a draft report to have.
We don't have a final document, though.
We don't have the final document yet.
What's the holdup?
Just want to meet one more time to make sure it meets everyone's criteria.
Okay.
Who do they have to meet with?
Would they meet with Jim?
Tim?
Tim.
Okay. Do we expect changes in it? Or, I mean...
They just want to make sure the lighting is appropriate for our, potentially done as well.
Okay.
Do we have an idea when that will be forthcoming?
Open.
Thank you.
There you go. Moving on to the transfer station, final report discussion. Ordinance. I've gone up and asked if we get a list of what we require to reorganize the direction of flow, traffic flow at the transfer station. And I'm also looking to reopen the back so that we can let some of the guys with the bigger loads get back there and unload them. The problem right now was that we were looking into that earlier this fall. And when they went to open the gates on it, the hinges broke. And they've been trying to get up there. They had problems with the welder, I guess the portable welder. And spoke to them just the other day. They're going to get up there and re-weld the hinges so they can get the gates back on. There's going to be an extension on the, the back gate to raise it a little bit higher to preclude people falling in, getting over the edge of it. There's also going to be rules concerning unloading from within your truck. The danger of standing up in a pickup or a large dump truck and falling into it is very great. And one of the criteria for going back there and using it is the acceptance that you do it all from the ground. We don't need to wind up with people falling in. So, we're looking to reroute the traffic, and I'd like to see that done this fall, preferably before December, depending on how fast they can get the welding done. And then, we're going to be reopening the back for dumping. And it's probably going to follow your original plan, Randy. There is a plan to bring it down, bring vehicles in in front of the main hopper there and just go down next to the building to get onto the scale. But that's going to require paving and some site work. And probably at this stage of the game, that's not practical. So, we'll follow the original plan and then review changing it later. But I do want to get that done. I think that's a good idea, and everyone up there agrees with it. Talked to the guys that work up there. They think it's a great idea. And we're going to see that it gets done. The next step. Anything on that?
So, there's other issues as part of this. Are we going to be acting on any of those in the near future?
Well, the sticker thing, they're supposed to be making sure that everyone has one. And they keep telling me they're doing it, and I keep hearing about people who are getting through without a sticker. And I keep reminding them. And I think we suggested at one point that we might go up there and just not do it, not issue stickers, but just kind of remind people when we saw a vehicle without a sticker and let them know that somebody's watching.
Okay. So, that's one thing, which is very simple and minor. We still are scaling our commercial haulers that are going in there.
That is required by state statute. And they don't like it? We don't like it? Everybody would like to stop them.
Well, it's essentially damaging our scale, I suspect, because I don't think it was really designed for that. But as importantly, if we are looking at some savings, that was one of the impetus is to move forward and recommendations of this, especially if we're going to be, you know, purchasing a container truck and try and reduce our hauling costs. So, this needs to be addressed.
I thought that was an issue because of the contract, the union contract didn't go though.
Well, we have a union contract now, so...
We have a union contact, and they will not be hauling.
Okay.
As the transfer station. We have others who are willing to do it.
Okay.
However, with the tree situation and the rain situation, we truly do not have any excess capacity up there. Everyone is straight up.
And I think it's even more important that the commercial haulers be hauling to wherever rather than to our facility.
Yeah.
To reduce our costs.
That, that's certainly something we've got to get into. Not arguing with you, but we've got to find the time to do it. And right now, we are straight up. And right now, we are straight out.
We as-
Myself and everyone else involved.
I'm just afraid that there's always going to be an issue managing this town and whatever. That always going to be something more important that's going to take precedence over this. And I'm thinking that maybe this is one of the most important things we have to deal with.
I don't want to get into debate on it right now. Many of the premises that were involved with the recommendations are changing. If you go out and you take a look at China's willingness to take trash, our trash now, our recyclables, that's fading very fast. Get involved with Mira, and they're already talking about charging for recyclables going into their operation in Hartford. I need to get up and find some time to do it and sit with the guy up at Willimantic, find out what the future holds for us, that is going to change. And China is really becoming a driving force on that. Our recyclables are too dirty. They want them far more selective in terms of what we give them. And they're not taking a whole lot of them anymore, that they were taking right up until just a few months ago. The landscape is changing, and it's changing very fast. And I think we need to be ahead of that when we get involved with it. And that's, as I say, I've got to get up to Willie, sit down with him, find out just what is happening, what he sees in the future.
And have you had any meetings with DEEP or whomever else handles the, whoever else handles the recycling for their-
Not yet.
I would start with D-E-E-P because I would think that they would have a less bias.
I need to know what the market is right now. Because I know on the other side of the river, the market has changed. And my question is, why hasn't Willimantic changed too? They got an end somewhere, or don't they?
Yes, I understand that the Chinese have been becoming more particular in what they're accepting, but-
A great deal that was being accepted no longer is. And one of the questions is glass. What they're saying is our glass smells funny. I don't know quite what that means. But they don't really like our glass anymore. And I've heard that that's being stockpiled, and I'm not sure for what or where. As I say, there's some information that I-
As long as there's a good reason, I mean, you know that-
I-
I mean-
It's been on my- It's been on my chart. I've got to get up there. And every time I get ready to go, something pops. Patrol of animals, the trailer. Citations, those are all pending. Crisis and strategic communications.
Could we talk about those for a minute? I mean, we can move those, I believe, even though they're sitting in a- we're waiting for the citation portion of it. But there's no reason that we can't at least get people aware of what's being enacted, even if we don't have the citation to move them or to enforce it. So I think it's one thing, just so I don't have to look at it and so it doesn't have to-
I would like it off the list too.
Move at least along to a hearing.
We've got to go to public hearing on, and then town meeting.
Right.
We can certainly schedule that. And it'll be without teeth because we won't have the citation part of it.
That's fine.
But we can do that.
Would you want to do that now, or definitely at the next meeting?
Let's do it at the next meeting. We don't have anything prepped for that.
Thank you.
Crisis Communication.
We met again November 1st. So we're coming up with our current recommendations, but we are not finalized on. We are meeting Monday again to finalize our first round of recommendations. It's going to be a step process, so we will meet on Monday and then up present. We're trying to get this done, so our recommendations will take, will hit our budget for next year. So we want to get it into- so we can actually think about it in the budget process, and people can account for it. So hopefully at the next meeting, so our meeting's the 12th, yeah. So at our next selectmen's meeting, I'll have something to, which is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
And then you'll have a meeting of some sort to discuss the initial recommendations?
Yeah, well, that's one of our recommendations. Is to have some type of community forum about it.
All set?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. New business. Chatham Health District-
About 2019 Board of Selectmen?
Oh, okay, I want to skip right over that.
I hope we could only make a year go away that easily.
One year.
There we go. 7G. You've got the schedule. There's three dates there. March 5th, which is the-
6th.
6th, rather. The 6th, which is Ash Wednesday. That being a day that we probably would not want to meet. July 3rd, the evening before the 4th of July. And January 1st. And your take on canceling those three meetings next year?
March 6th is in the middle of budget season.
Mm-hmm.
So-
We can always schedule a special meeting if we need one.
It's fine with me.
3rd and January 1st likewise, we can do a special meeting if we need one. That looked pretty good.
I won't be here January 1st, so.
I'm a heathen, so it doesn't make any difference.
You're what?
A heathen.
You're a heathen. Well, I don't know if you'll stay a heathen forever. I'm going to make a motion.
I can have a regular meeting on January 1st anyway.
No, you can't.
If you read my question, my question is asking, do you want to schedule
For one on the 8th?
A different regular meeting on another night?
Or whatever.
That was my question.
Specifically that this, I don't see it-
Can we leave it for the next selectman to figure out, since November will be elections?
But you can always hold a special meeting.
Yes.
Fair enough. Let them figure it out at that point. I'm going to make a motion to approve the following dates for the meeting schedule for the Board of Selectmen for the 2019 calendar year. January 2nd and 16th, February 6th and 20th, March 20th, April 3rd and 17th, May 1st, 15th, June 15th and 19th.
5th.
5th, I'm sorry. That'd be awful tight, 15th and 19th. July 17th, August 7 and 21. September 4 and 18. October 2 and 16. November 6 and 20. December 4 and 18. January 15 of 2019. All meetings to be held at 7:00 PM in the municipal office complex, meetings rooms 1 and 2. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now new business. Chatham Health District Discussion. There's been some discussion about Chatham Health and whether or not we're being served well. And what exactly the problems are and what the alternatives are. And I've scheduled a meeting tomorrow night. Be here at 7 o'clock. And we're going to have Andy Tierney and Don from Chatham Health. And we're going to have the Economic Development Commission. They'll be calling the meeting, and it'll be under their auspices. And they've raised many of the issues that we have with them. Chatham Health at this point is discussing reorganizing. Don, who is the current director, is intending to step down. He wants to retire later in this year. And is looking to have a new director appointed and get him well on board with things moving along. There are alternatives for us. The Connecticut River area, which is based out of Saybrook, is one alternative. They're comparable to Chatham in terms of cost at $11 per person within the town. You've got Ledge Light, and you've got Uncas. Uncas does Salem right now. And Ledge Light is more than the London area, Old Lime, down in that area. They're $6 and $7, and I don't remember which one is which in terms of the cost per person. Problem is, you have to have it all wrapped up by the end of the year, by the end of December. And I do think that we have a lot of research to do, a lot of thinking to do. The way the system works, we have to opt to be out of Chatham by the end of the year, by December 31st. And then we actually leave the end of June and enter a new district as of July 1st. And I just don't think we have time enough to make a determination about what we should do. And Chatham has put on two new- what do they call them?
Sanitarians.
Sanitarians. I don't know why I can't remember that word. And is reorganizing to try to serve us better. They recognize that there have been some issues. And Don, who's actually quite a good sanitarian, is intending to come down here and be our sanitary and out of this town through the balance of his career. So I think it would be well served by him. So I personally am of the opinion that we probably ought to give them that year to get reorganized. I'm a little hesitant about getting involved with an organization out of Saybrook that's really directed towards the other side of the river. That was the problem with Hattam. When they were a member with Chatham, that they felt they were on the wrong side of the river and had created problems. That bridge is always an issue. But in any case, we're going to get together tomorrow night, talk about it, and try to hash out some of the problems and see where we're going. And this is just to make you aware of that.
Are there any services that? I mean, there's cost savings, first of all.
Yeah, well, there are and there aren't.
Okay. Are there services like that Chatham offers that the other two don't?
Yes. We get Everbridge through, that's about a $7,000 or $8,000 proposition. And that would be in addition. So if we have even money, and then we got another $7,000 or $8,000, that's one of the problems. The other thing is we have, with our ambulance service, we're very closely associated with the Chatham Health towns in terms of mutual aid. And we don't want to impact that. I contacted Susan Bransfield out of Portland, which is one of the members, one of the bigger members. And Mike in East Hampton told them what's happening and asked for their input and to be part of it. Offered them the opportunity to come down tomorrow and talk to us. Have quite an impact on the balance of the members in Chatham if we were to leave. Might not even be able to survive without us. So there's a whole lot of ramifications that we have to talk about. So a whole lot going on there. And I don't think we want to be hasty in terms of what we do.
I would just recommend that we reevaluate the services earlier in the year, next-
I think we're going to-
September or whatever.
I think we're going to start from January, really seeing what's going on.
Exactly, but I mean, we revisit the evaluation, see how things have progressed. And if they haven't progressed, then we will.
I'm in agreement with you. If things have not improved to the point where they're acceptable, I think then we have to really seriously look at relocating.
Because we'll need lead time for all the hearings and meetings and town meetings, et cetera, so.
They're well aware of that. Sir? Okay. Moving on. 2019 DOT Resurfacing Program. Installation of center line strips. And it's kind of, you look at it, you go, oh, my God, here we go again. I think everyone's familiar with those cuts they're making right in the middle of the road to remind you that you're migrating off the area that you belong in. And from my own standpoint, I kind of like them. I grew up at a time when you straightened all the roads as you went down them, which meant you kind of made the roads as straight as you could. I still tend to have that habit, and those are nice reminders for me that I'm out of line. And I don't have a whole lot of objections to them. I haven't heard a whole lot of objections. But what they're looking to do is Route 82. And basically going down, and I don't quite understand why. But around Bone Mill Road, they're going to stop, skip a short section, then continue on down to the four corners at Ferry Road. And I don't fully understand their plan, but that's how they've got it laid out. You've got a map there that'll show it to you.
Yeah, I don't understand that. We're saving quarter mile or mile, half mile at the most?
I look at it, and there's no good reason not to have them there, but maybe, there may be-
I mean, it's a relatively straight section of road, but I don't, unless there was concern that, you know, the noise. I mean, if, as, people along there may be somewhat less receptive of the rumble strips, because if people tend to crowd the center line, which they probably shouldn't be, but they are. I visit a house quite often where there are rumble strips, and it's, you hear it constantly.
So it could be annoying to the neighbors.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Well, we better rethink this out. We don't want another sign issue. Now we're going to have people complaining about the rumble strip.
Thank you, Mike.
I don't think there's going to be a problem with that.
Are we approving this? We don't have to approve it.
No, I can sign it, but I didn't want to sign it without running it by you and getting your take on it. And we actually have a- I've got a motion here, and I'll make it, to concur with the installation of center line rumble strips in the section of Route 82 in the town, east, town of East Hattam, between Route 152 to Bone Mill Road and between 500 feet north of Banning Road to the East Hattam Line Town Line. That neither a public information meeting nor a public hearing is needed for the installation of the center line rumble strips. Can I get a second?
Need a second for discussion, right? Second.
And then discussion.
So are they doing this everywhere in?
I see a great deal of it.
Are they putting them in because we've had a lot of accidents on them? I mean, it's not, what is the history of the road?
That's the idea, to keep you on your side of the road.
Right, I know, but I understand that, but what's the history of, we have an accident? I just can feel this coming back about the signs.
There are accidents along that section.
Right, and that's why we put the signs up?
I live on that upper section. I'll probably be one of the ones that's bothered by the noise, if there is noise.
But you're on a straightaway, so it'll be less have to be there, but.
We'll see.
I guess I'm hesitant.
I don't even know how they would give a presentation on this unless they do an audio of people going over the rumble strip. So, I mean, they have them on the side of the expressway too, and you can hear them from a long distance when people drift on the expressway, so.
Can we ask for some type of presentation? So we should ask for a public hearing. Because I just think-
I think people should have the opportunity to have some input on it.
Right, exactly. Especially after the sign issue.
I will not sign it then. I will contact them and let them know you want a public hearing. If they want to move forward.
It's an information session.
So we have to finish the motion.
But all in favor? Aye. And two nays. It's not carried.
We're going to request a public-
I will request a public hearing on that. Element was voted down, but that you wanted a public hearing. And perhaps after a public hearing, we might be able to prove it. Okay. Moving on. We have a note here. This is from the East Hattam Facilities and Operations. Dear Mr. Lyman, please let this letter serve as a formal request to waive the- to waive the requirement for a second quote for the capital improvement project involving sound and light board replacement at the Nathan Hale Ray Middle School. The attached proposal from sound stage system fits all the needs of the facility, has a value, and the value is 350 less than the budgeted amount. Proposal also offers the same technology and systems currently in place at the high school. It allows students and staff to become familiar with one system. Last weekend, the middle school hosted the annual variety show. The current microphones and sound system failed during several key moments and negatively affected the performance. Since this summer, I have attempted to obtain a second quote from two additional sources, however, no response received. I would like to complete the budget upgrades as soon as possible and ask you waive the requirement for a second proposal. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully, Ron Turner, Director of Operations. And therefore, I'm gonna make a motion to waive the requirement for a second quote and authorize the Director of Operations to negotiate with the sole proposer, sound stage systems, the sound and light board replacement at the Nathan Hale Ray Middle School. Can I get a second?
Second.
And any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Lots of bids tonight. We have our, which is sand and snow and ice control. And we've got a recommendation letter, October 25th, 2018. Eight bids for the subject project were opened, summarized below. Hubert E. Butler Construction Company, LLC, submitted the low bid. I recommended award to Hubert E. Butler Construction Company for $14.30 per cubic yard. Subject to documentation that the sand complies with the town's specifications and the insurance requirements for the award are satisfied. As a backup, I recommend that Public Works Department be authorized to order from baldy sand and gravel if for any reason Hubert E. Butler Construction Company, LLC, is unable to fulfill the bid requirements. And on that note, I'll make a motion to award the bid for the purchase of sand and snow and sand for snow and ice control to Hubert E. Butler Construction Company, LLC, in the amount of $14.30 per cubic yard. And further authorize Public Works Director to order sand from the next lowest low bidder, baldy stone and gravel, for the amount of $14.34 per cubic yard. If for any reason Hubert E. Butler Construction Company, LLC, is unable to fulfill the bid requirements. Both awards are subject to documentation that the sand is in compliance with the town's specifications, that the insurance requirements for the award are satisfied. Get a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on that?
So typically Butler's sand gravel is red because it's sandstone based. And I just want to make sure everyone understands that there will be reddish material going down on the roads when it is applied for winter storm. As opposed to the sand, which is usually baldy, which would be white or beige or whatever other color. I don't know if it's a huge issue for me, but I'm just bringing it to the forefront that some people may have issues with that, so.
Does it color your car? Does it do something?
It will give you a reddish color on your car.
Until you wash it off.
Until you wash it off.
Until you wash it off, yeah, it's not permanent, nothing.
Instead of a tan color, we get a red color.
Essentially, yes.
And if you have a red car, it's okay.
If you've got a red car, you're golden.
But it's the same, it's the same...
Well, it has to meet the specification.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the specifications have to do, and I just learned this, with the polish of the granules, you don't need baseball nice smooth ones. You need gritty ones with points and arrows and whatnot that'll give you some bite. So you actually magnify it, you check it for self, you do various other things. Any further?
I just...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And for snow plowing. We gotta go together. And this is to Emmett Lyman from Elizabeth S. Lund. Winter plowing by contract. This will summarize our review of snow plowing prices for private contractors. Prices were received from four contractors representing three classes of equipment. Following represents summary of the proposals received and my recommendations. And you can read that. I don't know that I need to read the whole thing through. They curiously are $140 for each of the various grades. $10,000 with a sander, $10,000 to $25,999 with a sander, and over $26,000 pounds with a sander. And you have James Carlson and Eastland for the $10,000. James Carlson, Hubert, and Eastland for the $10,000 to $25,999. And Eastland and M&amp;S for the 26, over 26. And she would recommend setting the award price equal to the above recommendations in each category. Is recommended that a call-out list be created for the above contractors at the recommended prices, subject to their accepting terms and conditions defined by the town. These include insurance, licensing, performance standards, and other conditions per the town's performance standards. And on that note, I will make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Public Works Administrator and set the snow plowing rates as follows. Up to $10,000 gross vehicle weight with sander, 140 per hour, between $10,000 and $25,999 gross vehicle weight with sander, 140 per hour, and over $26,000 gross vehicle weight with sander, 140 per hour. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Why do, why do they all tell us what kind of trucks they have except for Eastland? I don't know if it matters.
Not really, I wouldn't do so.
I don't think that it does, really. Trucks, trucks. Eastland's new, I know that. He's been around for a couple of years. He may not be aware of the conventional way of recording it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Connecticut Department of Transportation. Grant approval confirmation. And you've got that. And this is for drug and DUI enforcement program. The resident trooper's going to have. And it's for $24,800. And we've done these on a fairly regular basis in the past. I'm gonna make a motion to accept the grant in the amount of $24,800 from the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation entitled FY 2019 Comprehensive DUI Enforcement Program for Resident Trooper. Send acceptance of said grant to the Board of Finance and then to the town meeting for approval. Get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, discussion on that? Okay, Rob?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Conservation Commission has a change. And I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Gary Wilson as an alternate member to the Conservation Commission, filling a vacant two-year term to expire June 30th, 2019. Can I get a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, and we have a letter from Rob Smith indicating, recommending the appointment of Gary Wilson. Has decided at a meeting last night. His credentials are there with it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Tax refunds. I'll make a motion to award tax refunds in the amounts as presented. $283.85 to Nissen Infinity LT, $401.19, 19 cents. $401.19 to CAB East LLC, $73.45 to Joseph Zachlochowits, $392.82 to Nissen Infinity LT, $75.42 to David and Claudia Skinner. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Once again, the public.
Hi, Eric. So just two items. First, thank you for addressing the athlete road. Right after we volunteered to take care of that, they were there the next day for three days, so they got it passable. The signs are missing again from the Wicken roadside. There's still a mafia block in the middle of it. People have been using it daily, so just...
Seems to be working. The signs are quite expensive. I'm trying to remember, they're a couple hundred dollars a piece.
Death said that they're getting stolen.
And they're being stolen as fast as we can put them out. I have no idea why, why they're being stolen. Okay.
Opinion is greater when you do it justice, but...
I'll mention that to her, see if she can run it greater through.
Second item, as you know, I always have my opinions on Chatham, so I'm gonna give it again. As you know, I am a big proponent of keeping it in town. I think we could do a fair job keeping it in house. I mean, we currently employ our building inspector, actually has been taking courses. I've been in discussions with him. He's taking sanitary courses, so he is not that far off. And I'd like to keep it in house if we can, if at all possible, and give him an incentive to finish that schooling and get there. I mean, maybe not, I don't know, but I don't know how that, how that all works, but...
I've talked to a number of people about that, and that was my opinion at one time. I very much wanted that. You have to retain a doctor, you have to have nursing staff. There's a great deal more that you have to supply as a town. Most towns that I've spoken with that have done that or are part of that are moving away from it, it's prohibitively expensive. On top of that, a couple of years ago, there was quite an initiative by the Department of Health trying to create districts all over the state and restructure the entire thing. That seems to be coming back in a slightly different form. And both Essex and Westbrook today, at the meeting that I attended, were discussing about the pressure that's being brought to bear on them to give up their town limited health district and move into, what did you call it, a district-type arrangement. So I'm not sure just where all that's going. That's certainly something that's under consideration. But the cost of it, pretty universally, everyone agrees, is much, much higher if you have your own district limited to the town.
Which may be. The last I knew, it was six, it was just over six figures. One of the towns pulled out of Chatham, which obviously all the towns had to kind of compensate for the extra cost. At one point, we did still have a vehicle for the building department. I guess that's not in effect anymore, but I still say that if we could employ a person for six figures, we're already paying over six figures not to be involved in Chatham. Still seems, at the end of the day, we'd still be, you know, almost $50,000 to $60,000 ahead of the game yearly. Again, I don't know what it entails to retain a doctor and so forth, but again, I'm just offering it. It's how I think, and maybe it's, it's not how everybody else thinks, but...
Okay, just so you're working with the right numbers. We are charged by Chatham at this point $105,000 per year for their services, which includes Everbridge, which would cost us about $7,000 to $8,000, somewhere in that range. None of the others offer Everbridge along with it. And we use Everbridge. That's a serious part of our emergency services. In addition to that, they charge clients within the town about $23,000 per year. And that's the sum total of what it costs us. So when you say six figures, we're in those, we're in that range already.
True, but I guess I'm kind of trying to, you know, full shared services, having a full-time building inspector and not having to wait for permits and wait for having that inspector there when we need him. He's there all the time, he's there for dual purpose. It's just, to me, it's a win-win because I'm at that end. I see, I see the daily interaction in that.
An interesting proposal. That's an interesting proposal. Thank you. Bob?
I think I too would like to speak on the Chatham Health. Obviously, you wrote letters from the Economic Development Commission. And I think that the economic development has had meetings with Chatham Health. We have had meetings with Connecticut River Valley. And that is why we've also looked at other alternatives out there and addressed it in also what just was brought up. Basically, I think that what we're seeing right now is some very... Right now, it's been going on for three years, some very poor services out of Chatham Health. This isn't new. This has been going on for years. It's gotten worse in the last year. And, and I think that certainly we're hearing from it. The Economic Development Commission is hearing about it from the businesses. And I think that there definitely needs to be some changes made. I don't think we should be, last year, we went through this, and it was the same thing, that let's give them another try. It's gotten worse. And instead of working towards better solutions, we have actually, now we have nobody in the office and we don't have any kind of a service that we should be gapping. I mean, we're, basically, it's $10,000 a month that we write to Chatham Health. And, and I think that we deserve better services than what we're getting. When I'm looking around at the other health districts that are out there, what we're, what economic development is looking at is developing a regional type of a cooperative. And we've been doing this with economic development things. Hattam and East Hattam work together a lot. We've developed now the five-town economic development, the Connecticut River Valley, which is the Essex, Chester, Deep River, Hattam, and East Hattam, which has been coming along very nicely. And I think that it looks like this is a great way in which to start to develop the regional cooperation with economic development. They're also all in the Connecticut River Valley and the health district. And I think that it would be a nice combination to have, as Emmett brought up earlier. The state certainly wants us to be part of a health district. I think that it's certainly more burden on the administration if you try to take and do it within-house. Whereas if you're part of the health district, there are certainly a lot of benefits to it. But I think that if we were part of the health district that's Hattam and Chester and Deep River, and I think that it makes for a better partner for us. It's a partner that we're dealing with. We have no relationship with Heveron and Mauro. They're just not partners of ours. And, and this health district, I've been impressed how they operate. I've been in their offices, and the committee has been in their offices. And I think that we have a comfort level with Connecticut River Valley. And I think that we should take a serious look at them and see if they are a better alternative for us. And we've basically, Hattam has basically now been contracting with Connecticut. They're very happy with the Valley Health District. Chester has joined on to that health district. Lime has just this month joined it, and they're looking, they want us. They want East Hattam a part of their health district. They want to basically be from the Hattams to the sound. And, and they've pretty much got it now. And they're very interested in having East Hattam as a part of their district. And I think that they also come with... And I think that they also come with basically a very sound economic base. There's, there are towns that are relatively wealthier towns, they come with businesses, they come with fee income. When you have those, all those restaurants that are along the shoreline and the Connecticut River Valley, they're basically have income. And I think that on the long run, we're going to be far better off with a health district that has a, basically, a very sound financial base. And I think that we should be taking a hard look, and I think we should do it while we're probably right now in a situation where we don't have anybody in this office, so we're, it's no employment that's going to be jeopardized or infringed upon because we don't have anybody who's assigned to East Hattam. If there's going to be a change in the administration in Chatham Health, this is a good time to do it. So when management comes in, they're going to know, they have four towns to work with, they don't have five towns to work with. They're gonna also know what their income is. So I think this is the time to move because it's a good time to notify everybody as to your intentions so that they don't bring on new staff and new people that are basically, and then we're gonna be on the fringes. And so we have this meeting tomorrow. I think we're, we want to give Chatham the opportunity to show that they can do something good in this town, but I think there's greater opportunity from what I've seen so far. I don't want to judge tomorrow's meeting yet, but I think that when I see the economic base that comes with the Connecticut River Valley group, I think there's more opportunity and there's more of a partnership and more of a good regional partner for us by developing it with that group. And I think we should really take a hard look at this, but I think we have to reserve our comments until tomorrow evening after the meeting. But I'm very interested in their financial soundness and their financial ability to basically raise fee income. And they're basically working with towns that are wealthier towns, but they're similar to us. Their population is similar to us, their interests are similar to us, and of course, we're looking at it from the standpoint of the tourism that we have developed with them and continue to develop with them. And so I just wanted to bring those points up, that there's a lot more on the table here than just whether the services that are being provided right now are adequate, but there's other things that are involved too. And I think there's a lot of benefits to looking at something else. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob.
I have to echo both Eric and Bob's comments. I sat in selectmen's meetings three years ago when the deadline was coming to notify Chatham Health, and Chatham Health sat there and said, "Give us another chance, we're gonna be, do better, give us another chance, we're gonna do better." You know, fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on me. I think it's time to cut our ties with Chatham Health. I, I think it's inhibiting economic development in the town, I think their fees are outrageous. I, I'm surprised to hear it's only twenty-five thousand when I heard the, what was it, five hundred dollars?
One hundred and five thousand?
Twenty-three thousand.
On those fall weekends.
And fees.
The fees that they charge individual customers.
Basic cost.
Oh, okay.
There's base costs and there's fees.
It's a deterrent when somebody applies for a permit and they don't show up on time, we don't have a, a health officer here.
Major?
I, I think the Board of Selectmen needs to move ahead and consider at this point terminating the contract. You have six months, you could sign again with Chatham Health effective July one. But the, the time is now, not to wait another year, another eighteen months.
Okay, thank you.
I don't often agree with Bob Kastner, but this time I have to say I do, wholeheartedly. For all of the reasons I'm not gonna reiterate, but it definitely makes more sense. So I think that you should listen to what these two gentlemen said.
I'm completely off of Chatham Health. The Public Works has been doing a Monday through Thursday schedule during the summer. Are they gonna go back to Monday through Friday now that it's getting darker?
They've already been back on it for about a month, month and a half at this point? I think it's about a month now, they've been back. Yes, sir.
I went on Alexander Road and also Lake Haywood Road. I was driving through there and there's just, the yellow lines are just arbitrarily go from one line to double yellow lines in the middle for maybe a hundred feet and then stop for no apparent reason. And it spots all along on Alexander and on Lake Haywood Road. I don't understand, is there, is that all getting double lines, or just, there was just arbitrary double lines and they stopped?
You know, I noticed the same thing on Ray Hill Road. And I don't understand that myself, I'll, let me ask her about that, because I don't know.
Who's doing the lines?
We, we have a vendor who does the lines.
But why are we, oh.
I think they correlate with our, our new arrow road corner signs.
Is that...
Some even have the yell, the white, the white lane markers.
No, I think that's what you find, because on Boardman Road, that's the only place they are, is where those signs are. And I've noticed it in several other places.
So they put double signs on the...
Oh, so the state's doing it?
I assume the state has paid for, as part of this whole project.
Because I was wondering why we were doing lines.
Because we couldn't figure out where the corner was with all the signs, so they put, I'm waiting for the rumble strips.
I will, I will ask.
There's also white lines on the, on the, on the edges of the road, on one spot.
The common spots are on the dirt because the road wasn't white enough.
But not on all the W, I, I don't understand the arbitrary...
I, I noticed that, I thought Ray Hill Road was the only one, they just hadn't finished it.
I believe it's where they put the arrow signs.
It has to be, because I was wondering why they put them on B B, we got one all of a sudden.
Hopefully they put them on the dirt.
Right before the dirt. I think, right, didn't they put, I'm like, why are we putting, why are we taking, we have so much time on our hands. Why are we putting lines on, but it's not our summer, I was gonna ask you if it was us or the state and why they were on B B Road.
I, you know, I thought it was just the one, and now I'm finding it's a whole bunch of them, I'll ask.
In fact, for a while there, that was the only place where there was double lines and white stripes on Boardman, and then the rest of the road was done. Two different paint colors, actually, two.
Yeah, they're not the same yellow at all.
Emmett, are the traffic lights coming soon too?
You got, you got that blinking one down by the school, right, right down here. I hope not. Barry?
Yeah, a couple of questions on Board's commission. Couple of months ago, you had, you had appointed me for Gateway Commission and had appointed a new member.
Yeah, you're both, you're both appointed, we finished that.
Has he decided to do it or not? There was a big question.
He's decided to do it, he's doing it, yes.
Well, I haven't seen him at any meetings yet, it was still up in the air, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, he called the other day.
Gateway hadn't heard about it.
I guess he hadn't seen his letter yet.
Okay, I'm just asking.
But he is indeed a, he is indeed a member.
Okay, okay. You had also asked me to participate in the Financial Meets Roundtable. I got an email, I responded, I haven't gotten back, I guess you had made a date, I wish that...
I think it's the fourteenth.
Yeah, I wish that you had given us a few dates, because we have done several meet, you know, committees, the meetings, this and that. I would love to be able to attend the first meeting, but I can't, I was hoping that you'd be able to reschedule it.
I, I saw your email on that, and what we did was look at the calendar and look at the meetings.
Your calendar.
Yeah, the one, well, basically, planning and zoning stuff, we knew you'd be at, and then everybody else, and tried to find a date that worked all the way around.
If you like sent out a few dates to all of us, then we can get back.
I, I think we didn't come up with a few dates.
Gateway and, I mean...
We, we knocked ourselves out looking for multiple dates, and that was it.
I wish you would like ask us. Are you still gonna hold at that date or can we reschedule it?
You know, I think, I think we'd be into January if we didn't.
That's fine with me, I mean, it's your first meeting, it'd be nice if everyone was attendance.
Yeah, let me, let me poll people, see what they say. We do want to get this going.
Right, I mean, I, I volunteered, again, I'd like to be there, I think it's important to be there on the initial meeting.
I, I appreciate what you're saying, and I, let me look into it, see what we can do.
In the future, when we start to plan these, can we at least give us a few dates and so that we can all, like, what it was on it, please?
If I remember correctly, we looked at dates and looked at dates, and this was the only date.
Yeah, but, but unfortunately, your planning and zoning special meeting wasn't on the calendar.
Right, I realized that, but things happened.
And with the holidays, with Boardman's schedule, with everybody else's...
After we already made a decision that we're gonna be doing it on that.
But this, once again, this pushes us out into January sometime to do it, and that's, that's the catch. And I think we're gonna run into the same kind of problem with any date that we pick.
And I think the part of the reason, and I'm not on it, but, and just thinking about the reason with it not being in January is probably because they're trying to talk about budget issues.
Right, I realize that.
We're gonna be straight out.
But I've got a meeting, I have to be there.
I, I understand, but...
I, I wish you'd work with me on this.
Let me see what we can do, but...
Thank you.
It's gonna be very difficult.
I mean, I'd like to have Harvey at our meeting, because, you know, we're starting to wrap up the conservation of the plan.
I got you, we'll take a look at it, see what we can do.
Would it make, make sense to put out a Google poll or something similar so that people have an opportunity to come up with dates, or you, at least you can get a consensus and when the majority or largest number can attend?
I have four meetings next week.
I have four meetings every week.
Yeah, but I, you know, I don't get paid. I have to volunteer.
And when I don't have five. Let's see what we can do, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
Todd?
Sounds like you need a meeting to schedule a meeting. What we do, I, I have a similar problem, I have meetings with twenty-four people from around the world. What you do, they each give me their schedule, access to the schedules, so I know what days open. It's my job to figure out where the open holes are for everybody, and that's how you do it, otherwise you'd never have the meeting, and you won't get the attendance that he's talking about, because he's absolutely right, need people there. That's what I suggest you do, have them give you their schedules, you'll figure out what the open days are for everybody. It could be two weeks out from here, or three weeks, it could be a while, but that's the only way it's gonna happen, the only way you talk, you need...
We, we do tend to do that, Todd, but you might not appreciate it. Linda has a schedule in there for all the meetings to go on in all the rooms here, and we pretty much know who attends what.
But, but you have to put individual schedules for his schedule and all the members. They have, yes, you have meeting room schedules, but I'm talking individuals. Then you gotta find a meeting room, but that's what I suggest, that's what I do every day. So it's, it's gotta be done. Well, I have four things to talk about besides that, if you don't mind. The first thing is the recycling issue. I've read about that several, several places. That is a worldwide issue because we're among the developed world, it's across this whole country. And one of the complaints the Chinese have is that we're giving them dirty garbage. Too much food required, and I don't think money on the deal. We've got to, I think, and I talked to a few other people, it's our mainstream. Remember, we used to sort out the garbage, the recycled, recyclables ourselves? But now we put them all, everything goes in together, that, that means a lot of other things go in too, and it really can't be sustained, it's not working.
That, that is controlled by Willimetic, they tell us how to do it.
Yeah, I know, that's also controlled by the U.S. government. So my point is, I think Rob's absolutely right. You need, you don't want to reinvent the wheel. This is the problem every town, every state is having, every country's having in the developed world. And there's gotta be a common solution because it's a big problem. And I think rather than waste your time because you've got plenty of things to do, basically, schedule meetings as well. So you should have, use deep as your consultant, have them help you out, don't, don't wait around because it'll never get done. I'll give you a little hint, most plastic, almost all plastic comes from oil. It can be converted back to oil. But right now, the price of oil is not quite right to make money doing that, but press what we should do because you can't dump the stuff in the ocean, you already know what plastic bags do, and like, let's say, Washington's outlaw plastic bags was, I think is a good idea. So it has to be addressed, it has to be addressed in the same way by everybody, not just by the town of East Hattam. So that's why I suggest talk deep, but there is a light in the tunnel with this stuff. We're obviously not gonna bury recyclable materials, not gonna put them in a trash heap, and probably not gonna burn them because burning them is even more toxic. So, okay, that's what I suggest about that, there's more work to be done. I'm a little confused on stickers, are people getting stickers or not?
They, we are issuing stickers and we are requiring them. The issue very often is that they're busy and they're not paying attention to who's coming and going, whether or not they have a sticker. And they have to become more conscious of that and more careful about it. The stickers have been in effect for as long as I can remember. We have not really enforced it, and that is the big issue we have is enforcement. We've got to make people aware of the fact they have to have a sticker. No sticker, you don't get in. One of the reasons I like the idea of the gate and where you read the sticker, and if you didn't have one, you're gonna get through the gate.
Right.
But that doesn't seem to be real popular.
Can't afford to ship some of those garbage, we've got enough costs as it is. Okay, well, assuming you get there, the better. But the third item is the rumble strips. That area at Hattam was a nice quiet village area, Green Eighty-Two isn't quite that wide, plus it's a little windy. And I, I'm very experienced in rumble strips, I drive them every day, along with the truckers that go with me. And I think they're, I think you should ask the state for justification because it's not the cars so much that go rumble strips, it's the trucks. You got a trailer truck going down the town street in that area, he is definitely gonna ride on the rumble strips every time. There is enough room, he's gotta, he's gonna wiggle around, he's gonna do it, and those big tires, so many of them roll on rumble strips. And you do make a loud noise, you're absolutely right, you can hear them all night long. So I think that would be a major irritation, and I think the state's doing the wise thing, they know it would be too. Now, another thing that brings up to mind, the curb signs. Okay, what is the status of the curb signs? We're done with it, we're gonna live with it? I hope not, but is that...
For, for the moment, but I got a phone call from Kathy Eno over in Killingworth, and her Public Works Director told her that the state had contacted her and said, "They're yours now, you can control them, you can do what you want." I said, "That's terrific, we haven't heard that." I called Beth and said, "Have we heard anything like that?" We have not yet. I don't know whether they're going around, maybe after they get finished with the yellow stripes, they'll be settled in and they'll decide it's time to turn them over to us. I don't know, all I have is that one report. Beyond that, we essentially are through with them. Once we own them, then we'll do what we, what we judge fit. You know, I come up Ray Hill Road, and there's three of them, one after the other, just like the fingers on my hand. You can't see the second or third one, because they're lined up perfectly with them. What on earth purpose does that serve?
All right. I hope we follow Killingworth's lead.
Well, it's not their lead, it's, I hope we get the same information they got, and that she wasn't in error. But she was kind of delighted and pleased.
Why?
She was one of the ones who I believe removed all the signs, and then the state came in and said, "You're putting them all back up."
We paid for this, the taxpayer paid for all this?
Federal government paid for it, the federal program, that's, that's the same taxpayers.
The government had its best.
Yeah. Thank you. Eric?
Just quickly, Anna, tomorrow night, Ed and I won't be able to make it, but if you wouldn't mind...
Everybody on the other side, it's gonna be here.
Yeah, but I can't yell through the curtain.
Well, you can follow Craig, because he may be coming over for a bit of it.
If you wouldn't mind just kind of reiterating our sentiments to the halls, I would really love to be there.
Yeah, I, I understand that, and you know what, unless there's a major change, I'm a hundred percent in agreement, yeah. Just how we go about it, that's all.
Appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, selectmen's discussion, anything, Sue, or...
So I just have a question about back taxes, and does, who gets, does the Board of Fin, I know at the Board of Finance, we used to get a list of people with...
In arrears.
In arrears, who haven't paid their taxes. And do we have any, what's the process for people?
It's public information, I, I'm not aware of any lists being created, certainly nothing that comes to me, perhaps to the Board of Finance.
I have some. Denise, do you give something to the Board of Finance?
Board of Finance requested a report from me a few months back and wanted to know how I enforced election as prior years back taxes that they have outstanding. But did give them a report to say these are the accounts that will be getting a notice from the, the company for adjudication. But anybody's taxes are available online.
Right, I know, but I'm, I'm just wondering, do we have any policies or are there any policies we can put that, you know...
No, because I run my office, it's not, it's not you guys.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about, so at town meetings or requests for information, and if, if people have back taxes, we shouldn't respond to them if they're not gonna pay their services.
I'm not aware of any regulation or ordinance that would give us that. I'm not aware of any regulation or ordinance that would give us that power or that ability.
I mean, that's what we do as a company, right? You don't, you don't.
Corporate structures can do what they like.
But I mean, why should our staff waste time with people who have back taxes and haven't paid us?
Everybody's taxes are, it's pretty good. I do not discuss people's taxes outside of work. Many meetings I go to, there's many people that owe back taxes. I don't feel they should be treated differently. People owe back taxes for all different reasons, some because they don't want to pay, some because they can't pay.
And what is the, so, so people can just have tax, back taxes for years and years? I mean, three years, four years?
On real estate, it's up to three years. Then you get a notice from me, "I'm going to sell your house." Or you go to a collection agency and personal property. So it's not like.
So it's after three years they get a notice or after four years they get a notice?
The third year, I've sent out notices. This September, I sent out, down to about 30. I'm hoping that come next spring.
And does that usually make them pay their taxes or what usually happens by then?
Last year's taxes. It usually makes them pay.
So, okay. I was just curious.
I believe some towns actually post people that owe taxes that are in arrears.
I mean, we actually, as, you know, I, I do that with my company, you know, I run physician practices and we actually post, not patients, but we post, when people in our offices make mistakes, we deliver to everybody how many mistakes they made every month.
All the errors were made.
And it cleans it up. People stop doing it.
I imagine they would.
So I just, it's a good idea to post it.
I do not post.
I know, I'm just saying that some towns.
I mean, you know, I don't know.
One, it would be a long list and too expensive and two, I don't feel that's right.
That was my only, I was curious as to how we, how the process was for back taxes.
I'd have been in trouble one year there. I handed the check to my wife and said, "Go down and pay the taxes." Late, late in June.
I'm not saying one year, I'm not saying two years. Once it starts getting up to multiple, three and four years, I mean, I think that's.
Well, she carefully filed the check and the bill in the filing cabinet. And I went off backpacking for a month, came back and wondered why there's too much money in my checking account. And that's how I finally sorted it out.
That's funny.
But things happen, so it's.
Things do happen.
Anyway, Rob, anything?
Yeah, so we've had a tree crew out cutting trees, I believe, and which obviously isn't necessary as everyone's noted. My question is, were the trees marked before the leaf fall so we know where which trees are dead?
I asked Beth about that, if we needed to do that. And she said Charlie, Innes is it?
Island.
She says Charlie knows which trees we have to deal with and he can identify them just by looking at them. He knows which ones are dead. I said, "Should we mark them?" And she said, "You know, you start marking them and you increase your liability." And do you really want to go through and mark 100 trees and not be able to take 100 trees down? You do want to know of them. You want to make a priority list. You want to get to the ones that are the most critical and do them as quickly as you can.
Well, okay, except that now we have the tree person who's getting paid to take down the trees, identifying the trees that need to be taken down.
And you have to have a measure of trust and believe in his competency.
The tree should have been marked. You don't have to do it, obviously, but the state of Connecticut, I know in many places, at least tagging it, putting dots on them, whatever, so they can be identified so that there's.
They are marking some of them and we discussed that today as part of the meeting that I was at. And that was an item of discussion about marking versus not marking.
I don't think there's any difference in liability if, at this point, there's so many trees.
It's overwhelming to every agency that's responsible. And somewhere in the process, that has to be taken into consideration. But there's just flat out a limit to what you can do.
So what's the process? Like, so this one, whoever this guy is, has gotten down the trees. You just say, "Go to the street and cut down the dead trees."
We identify trees that we feel need to come down now, quickly.
So you know exact trees? And that's what he's taking down?
That's what identify a tree. People complain about it. They come, one way or another, she becomes aware, this tree really needs to come down.
So currently, we're not like sending him to a street and saying, "Okay, cut down all the dead trees and be."
No, no, not given a route. He's given a particular assignment and.
Particular tree or?
I'm sorry?
A particular tree or set of trees?
It could be either of those.
Okay.
You know, and the way he's doing it, and the problem you've got is that most of the trees have electrical wires near them. If you're within 10 feet of a wire, our crew can't touch it. They can't go near it. They're not certified for working that close to wires. Island is. And he'll go in, he'll remove enough of the tree so that now it's safe for our guys to go in, clean up what he dropped, drop the trunk, clean up the mess, get it out of there. By doing that, we can take an expensive resource, the tree guy, and get more trees done for the same money, then use our guys as they have the ability to get in there to clean it up. There's discussion that's going on about getting a wood burning stove for the Public Works, one of these remote units, you know?
But I'm, I'm just asking about the process of how you pick the trees and.
How you identify.
If you're assigning him certain trees or if he's just going in and cutting down trees?
Not, not, not clear cutting. EverSource, today they pointed out, they said, "We only use the major routes." And if you look up and you look at the telephone poles, count the number of wires on the top. If you have three wires, you're on a major road. That's a trunk route. That's getting priority right now. If you look up and you see two wires, that's a secondary route. You're not getting any priority at this point. If there's something that's absolutely imperative that it come down, they'll deal with it. But they're not going out there looking for any of it. Right now, it's the trunk routes. It's the major routes. They have to, they have to prioritize. This is part of their process. So, yeah, there's a lot of thought going into it. What's important? Where do we operate? What do we do? This isn't being done haphazard.
But I don't think you answered the question. Are the trees that the town is asking to be removed being personally identified or is tree?
At this moment, they're being personally identified.
By Beth?
Beth is identifying, saying, "This tree, we have an issue. We really need to deal with it." And trust me, there's plenty of work that way, more than enough to cover the time we